National percentiles were updated this year. So this is the most up-to-date they can get. Fastbridge was a couple of years ago that they determined the percentile. So we just broke it down. Level one, zero to nineteen point nine percentile. Level two, twenty to forty-nine point nine nine percentile. Level three, fifty to eighty-four point nine nine. And then level four, eighty-five to ninety-nine point nine nine percentile rate. So when we look at this data, we're really looking at how our students here in North Mason are scoring in comparison to the rest of the nation. And right here is our district K eight ELA Fastbridge A reading. Up until this year, we had done A reading, which is a computer adaptive assessment. It only grades two through eight. So K one did a completely different screening assessment, three times a year. This year, we said that's not gonna, we don't need to do that anymore. We need to have all of our K eight students taking the exact same assessment because we do want to be able to see some growth and where students are at with all, using the exact same assessment tool. So this is a computer adaptive assessment. This first one was done in September. And you can kind of see, just by taking that quick look at it, our students that are in kindergarten, first grade, we had a very large percent of those two grade levels that showed that they were in level one. So those are students that are coming in to us right now, that part behind. And we gotta do a lot of work to get them caught up, especially by that third grade, if we have that third grade reading goal of all kids in third grade are reading that grade level. So just as you can kind of see right there, I know the numbers are small, but almost sixty percent of our kids in kindergarten, so one hundred and thirty-three kindergarteners, sixty percent of them scored in that zero to twentieth percentile, just with about two weeks of instruction. In the math, it actually just kind of looks the same all the way across. And if you remember any of our presentations that we have with data in the previous two years, that's pretty consistent in what we've been seeing in math. We've had just kind of that kind of flat from kindergarten all the way to eighth grade. And also the same when you look at our smarter balance assessments, it kind of looks the exact same line all the way across. So this is the iReady assessment. It's our first year using iReady. This one's really based upon standards and it's given us a lot of good information. We're excited to get that second diagnostic done right before winter break and then also some makeups right after winter break as well. And to not leave out our high school goals as well, here's the graduation rate trends. And you kind of see, it's pretty flat right there at that eighty percent, right in that general area, eighty to in this, in two thousand and nineteen, seventy-nine point two last year. So these are all of our, both of our high schools combined to get this graduation rate. Our goal is at eighty-five percent. So they have some plans that they want, they want to be able to share about how they're gonna get that up to that eighty-five percent. I know our state's right at that eighty-three point six percent. Our goal is to get just a little bit above the state average here. So before we go to Sand Hill, what we, what we have is a presentation from all five of our buildings. And they're gonna share a lot about their goals and their action steps. They have a little bit of data on there. I've asked them to not spend a lot of time on the data. There's been a lot of focus. I just shared with you basically all the same information they have for their data. But they're gonna share out with what their goals are and then the action steps that they came up with. And at the very end, I'm gonna kind of close it off with what our district goals are and our district action steps. So hopefully, we're able to see a really nice through line all the way through with all of our buildings. And then one thing I've been kind of thinking about that might be a little bit different is if we have questions for buildings, write them down because I might be able to answer them with the district slides at the same time too. So if it's a really specific building question, at the very end of the entire slide deck, then we can start asking those building-specific questions. Okay? So first up, Sand Hill Elementary.
Jessica Bones, Principal of Sand Hill. Tyler Landry, Assistant Principal. Tyler is handing you some of our commitments, our instructional practice commitments that we're gonna be going through. So you have it in front of you. Like Kyle said, we look at data a lot. The thing that we're trying to do is get our data to change and look different. So in order to do that, we need to really focus on our action steps and our commitments, specifically around our instructional practices in the classroom at tier one. So our goals here, you can see, whole school currently twenty-five percent are at level three or four on our Fastbridge A reading. And like Kyle mentioned, we're now K five doing that practice, which is nice. Our MLs are currently, five percent of them are at a three or a four on the Fastbridge reading. A hundred percent of below, level ML students will make aggressive growth by the spring 2025 on our A reading assessment is our goal. So really what we're tracking is, we need every kid that has identified a high risk, and as you can see, a lot of our ML students, and it's a very similar goal for us, these students, need to make aggressive growth to close that gap. Fastbridge is awesome. It has a piece that can show whether they're making typical growth, a year's growth, or aggressive growth. And our goal is that they are making aggressive growth to close that gap. Here's our iReady math diagnostic. And you guys already looked at this, so we won't spend a lot of time there. Again, third grade's looking better than everybody else, but we're gonna keep pushing forward with what are we gonna do to make that change? Again, currently twenty-five percent of our students in math are at a three or four on iReady. Five percent, three or fours in our ML, and eleven percent at SPED. So we're going to again, look at, it's different language here, but it's called stretch growth in iReady, not aggressive growth. Same concept, we need to stretch them, they need to grow more than one year. So this is where the magic happens. This year, our instructional leadership team sat for a long time in August, a couple long days, and really took our blueprint commitments, and that is what we are committing to do for the whole year. And we really narrowed them down, we got super granular. What are we, what do we really need to do in order to make change, to be change agents, to make sure our kids are making this aggressive growth? So we committed to GLAD strategies and we committed to UDL strategies. But it's real easy to say GLAD strategies and there's like a thousand of them. So we got really granular and chose seven of those. So in front of you, you'll see our seven tip pocket GLAD strategies that we, that our district, excuse me, our, our school has committed to. I think Belfer Elementary has too, but. And those are laminated and put on everybody's wall to remind them that we are committed to those. We are going to, we focus on them during our instructional leadership team meetings. We ask, how are we doing in those strategies? What support do you need? We have a professional development plan throughout the year where we do GLAD strategies that are for staff meeting. We're doing that through walkthroughs as a district, at the district level, focused on these GLAD strategies. And the next is our UDL strategy, strategies. And this is, this one makes me the most excited. We really said, okay, again, UDL is huge. What pieces do we know have the highest effects of? What pieces are gonna make the biggest difference in our classroom for our students? And those three are intentional student choice, making sure our kids have choice and take ownership of their learning. Second one is making and creating smarty goals. We just had conferences last week, so we really wanted to share with our families and have students engage in goal setting and making sure that they're tracking it, they own it. We made a commitment that every single Wednesday, we are goal-setting with our students and conferencing with our students. It is in our master schedule, it is right there in front of everybody, and it is a commitment. And then the idea of meaningful feedback, that that feedback is coming in the moment, right now, instantly, so our kids get that feedback and can reflect in that. Let's see, common assessments, obviously, we want to ensure that everybody's using the same thing, that we're talking about the same thing. We're analyzing data the same way. We've committed to using our data dykes that we meet every six weeks each grade level to say, what data are we using? How are, what do our kids need? How are we progress, progress monitoring that? Are they making growth? Do we need to change that intervention? And then really diving in during our PLCs to make sure we're looking at student data, common student data, making adjustments. We also are going to have some PLC professional development coming in, which is super exciting. And we're pumped about that. So everybody's on the same page. Oh, sorry. Okay, and he said the same questions from the end.
Belfer Elementary, come up.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tyler Landry. So, Belfer Elementary School, our data looks very, very similar to Sand Hill. So our Fastbridge A reading, high here, kindergarten, kindergarten, again, high in the red. And so here are our goals, very similar to what Sand Hill has. So really trying to align our two schools too, is one of the goals that we're taking this year, a step towards doing, is trying to have a lot of discussion back and forth between the two buildings and how we're setting our goals. Our iReady math diagnostic, so our kindergarten, not as much in the red. So we're looking, okay. So I like iReady. I feel that it has a little more integrity than the Fastbridge did as far as the diagnostics go. I think we're getting a little bit better information and some of the feedback I get from the teachers is that the questions that the children are being presented with are more likely to be getting when they're taking those. Math goals, take a look at those. Once again, trying to get to a hundred percent of mastery with a really strong lens this year on my MLL population. And here's our action planning. So I went just straight into our CIC, and these are the things that I told the state that we're gonna be doing. So number one, implement core instruction, five days a week with fidelity. So we want good core instruction, tier one, happening in the classrooms. So they're gonna plan inclusive lessons and align core instruction with the district-approved curriculum, trying to get it really honed in with what we have approved and using some supplemental instructional materials. But that discussion has been coming up as they present those materials and how they align with the curriculum we've already invested in. Begin each lesson by reviewing the state standard lesson language objectives, so really honing it back to, what are you learning through this lesson today? And what are you expected toward at the end? So if I can walk into a classroom and enable the students to know what they are in their learning at that given moment. Use student discourse strategies to engage students in academics, so listening to them using the academic language and being engaged in their learning. So this is some of the things we are looking for as we walk through classrooms. Use formative self-assessment tools at the conclusion of a lesson. So when the teacher gives that lesson at the end of the lesson, we're always monitoring what we've taken away from that lesson. So are we doing an exit ticket with the kids? Are we doing a whiteboard check-in? So what did they know? And what do we need to do for next steps if they don't know? Collaborative regularly, collaborate regularly in PLCs. So the teachers are meeting weekly to look at student data and ask the following four questions. And so these four questions are ones that we keep bringing back to the teachers are, what do we want all students to know and be able to do? How will they, how will we know if they learn it? How will we respond when some students do not learn? So really trying to get to that point each time and that mindset going with our staff. And how will we extend the learning for students who are already proficient? So that conversation is happening right now as teachers are setting their student growth goals. These are the questions we're asking them as well. Implement win, what I need time. So this is something that's already been happening in our building, so really sending that intention to what this looks like and how do we move forward. One of the questions this year has been, how do we expand for our high cap students? So looking at that as well. So small groups that we facilitate it by SPED, MLL, and Gen Ed teachers. So we collaborate, we look at the data, and then they separate children out by what they need, and they need for thirty minutes for ELA, is the time that we separate into those given groups right there. But we do have win time as well for math as well as SEL. The win cycle is run, four cycles per year. And we're coming up now with our first, almost to the closure of our first cycle for fourth and fifth grade, where we will look at the data, where we're at, and what kind of progress the kids have been making, and what we need to do to get them moving forward.
Pam Clusman, Principal Belfer, and Kristi Dolbyus is the Principal Belfer.
Thank you, guys.
And now we have Robert Kelly in, Principal Hawkins Middle School.
Thank you. So our data looks, rather similar to the elementary school. First one's Fastbridge reading and, so if we're looking at their ELA goals, we're currently seeing about thirty-nine percent of our students at levels three and four. And we want to see that number increase by fifteen percent this year to what we're guessing would be about forty-five percent being successful. When we're looking at our ML ELA, they currently are only at two percent that are reaching three and four. And so we want to see that increase by fifteen percent as well. And with our SPED, we're currently seeing about ten percent at three and four levels and we're looking to increase that by fifteen percent as well. The iReady data also looks similar. The intriguing thing about this is we are seeing reduction in what would be the level ones, but we're still seeing a lot in the yellow area that would be the level twos. Again, our math right now overall is thirty-four percent at level three and four, and we're looking to have, see a ten percent increase in that. Our ML ELAs are currently at five percent. Again, we're looking at seeing a ten percent increase in that, and our SPED is at eleven percent, looking for a ten percent increase. So the things, our targets this year, starting with those, looking at the priority state standards, what are the main things that we want our kids to know and be able to do? That is being assessed on the SBA on the Fastbridge and the iReady scores. The, one of the things that we're noticing real heavily, especially with our MLL population, is a lack of a lot of academic vocabulary. And so one of our goals this year is for all teachers to be having daily language targets that are targeting their students with the academic vocabulary that is essential for the unit in which they're working in. The side benefit to that is it's really great for the ML students, but it's also really great for all the Gen Ed students as well. And so this is becoming something that is, we're hoping will raise everybody up in the ELA area. Our students with IEPs were being very intentional about what their goals are and what they need, if they need to actually have resource settings in order to help move them forward and having evidence of that growth, whether it's inclusion with some support or whether it is full inclusion where the SDI is being instructed from the general teacher. And so being very intentional based on their goals is how we schedule them into their classes over the course of the three years. With our MLL population, we, any student that has a WEENA score that is in a one and two area, we've assigned to sheltered language arts classes rather than a general language arts classes because it's more focused on language acquisition skills. It still covers the same content, using the same curriculum, but instead they're really focusing to try to build their English speaking skills. In addition to that, any of those students are also being included in a math intervention class. And they have their general ed math class still, but they also have an additional math class that is strictly for supporting them in language acquisition and intervention in math itself. So that's one reason we're really hoping to see some raises in our MLL populations around our math scores.
It's Mr. Calhoun.
You are ready?
Yeah. Chad Collins and Steve Hackidge for North Mason High School.
Graduation rates, Kyle went over those already. We're not gonna spend a lot of time on there. We're kind of pretty flat. We have some thoughts on how we're gonna get above the state, the goal, we want to Graduation goals here, Steve's gonna break down some of the data for you.
Yeah, so for the school, it was eighty-three percent. The district goal is eighty-five percent. So we're really, really close to that one. We think with a few things we'll talk about later, I think we can, we can definitely climb beat to that eighty-five percent. I think really go far beyond that, so that'll be awesome. So for our ML numbers, it says fifty percent. It was such a small group, there was only twenty-four students in that. So twelve graduated in four years. Those other students will graduate, it's just gonna take them a little bit longer. We know that, that process takes a little while. And then our SPED number was seventy-six percent graduated in four years, and that's actually ten percent above the state standard. So we're pretty proud of that number, that's ten percent higher. We'd like it to be higher, we're not content with seventy-six, but at least it's going in the right direction. So the goal is by the end of the school year, that we'll raise that graduation rate by five percent. And that'll be obviously above the, the district goal of eighty-five percent, so we think we'd be in a pretty good spot there.
This slide has our smarter balance, ELA and math percentages for level one, two, three, and four. Kyle, go to the next slide. We're adopting the, the new language the state is looking at with the level twos. So our, our goal is by the end of this, this school year, we're gonna increase the proficiency rate in level twos by fifteen percent. So reduce the level ones, get them up to level two, and then the level threes, increase level threes by five percent. We, we want to reduce those ones by fifteen percent, we gotta close that gap. So we gotta accelerate those kiddos, so that's why that's a larger, larger goal, percentage Same thing for math, want to reduce the level ones. So we have a goal of ten, reducing that by ten percent, and then increasing our level threes by five percent for SBA math. Here's the meat of the work we're doing right now. You've heard us talk a lot about AVID, AVID at the high school. We talked about it at the last board, last month's board meeting. We did some secondary professional development with all secondary teachers, Hawkins, James Taylor, HomeLink, and North Mason High School. Steve and I took them through an AVID PD in August. Pass that out?
Yeah.
So Hawkins has AVID, High School has AVID. When we see kids come up and they're, they have AVID strategies, they know what AVID is, it helps us take the kids to the next level. This sheet that you're getting right now are the vetted AVID strategies we've talked about. And on the back are, are departmental commitments. Let's see which strategies our departments, we've asked them to commit to two to four strategies that we're gonna see in action in their classrooms. We're actually gonna start that tomorrow with our district morning walk, second period. So we're excited for those. We have after-school tutoring this year. Able to adjust a person to be there till at least four o'clock every day, especially if a student is not passing a class and they're a student athlete. You're a student first, so you're gonna come in and do your, get your homework done before you go to practice. We haven't got into any of the details on, on the next one. We will be adjusting our state testing schedule this year to better meet the needs of students. More to come on that. More to come on that one. We, we look at grades throughout the trimester. Halfway through, we look at grade distribution. We just did that last week for progress, reports for conferences. And then we look at them at, at the end. Always are challenging teachers to halfway through, how many of those Ds and Fs can you get to Bs and Cs? We have the same conversation with students. And then the last bullet is freshman success. We talked on that last month, got a nice article in the paper about our focus on freshmen. Steve and I had our first round last week. On any, any freshman that had an F, a teacher gave their, gave their name to us, and Steve and I had one-on-one conversations about, I think.
And the number was way down. So last year, the number was twenty-four percent of all freshman classes.
At this point.
The failure rate at twenty-four percent through the end of September. This year, it was at ten percent. So it cut it down considerably amount, a considerable amount, which was nice. Hopefully continue that. We already have kids coming up to us in the middle of the comments, hey, here's my progress report, I'll pass an O five now, I'll pass it, you won't be meeting with me. All right, good.
I haven't had that before, so it would just give us chills. So we can continue that and we hope our efforts will improve our student learning.
Thank you, guys. Thanks. All right. I'd like to see you have Belfer Chief Sabre home.
Hi, again. Okay, so graduations at an alternative high school look quite a bit different than a comprehensive school. And really, anything sixty-five percent for graduation is pretty successful for an alternative school. So we're, we're meeting that benchmark. I would like to see it much higher. I will say our overall graduation rate is ninety-ish percent. Our four-year graduation rate is lower. Some students just need that little bit of extra time to finish. So currently, our whole school is sixty-five point four. Chris York is our MLL teacher, and she is phenomenal, and you can see that in our data here. Our MLL graduation rate, on-time graduation rate is just over sixty-six percent. And our students receiving special education services is just over seventy-one percent. So we always have the goal of students earning a minimum of six credits throughout the year. That means they are passing every single class outlined in their WSLPs or Washington State Learning Plan. And when they are on the online side of our curriculum, they are earning a minimum of one class every three weeks, sometimes faster if we have students that are really motivated and know they have a little bit of catching up to do. Our goal too is a hundred percent of our students receiving special education services will earn the six credits per school year compared to the previous year's averages of about four credits per school year. So that means really redesigning their goals and getting their minutes in in ways where they are completing their coursework with a good understanding in that three-week time period. And then we want to decrease the number of MLL students who are exited from James Taylor by fifty percent. So we had four MLL students that exited last year either for lack of academic progress, which means they're not passing classes for three sessions in a row, or they're not meeting the weekly hour requirement of twenty-seven point five hours a week. You cannot, we cannot keep them in our program if they're not meeting that for three sessions in a row either. And it's not or, it's and. So we want to decrease that number by fifty percent through this year. HomeLink is a little bit different, it's still an alternative school, but sometimes they still struggle. And you can see, last year, our graduation rate for HomeLink students did dip down to seventy-five percent. So for this year, unfortunately, our MLL and our special education population size is too small to get that data. The goal one is we want to see an increase of the number of students earning six credits from sixty-six point seven percent to eighty-five percent. Our students with IEPs will increase their on-track course completion rate from twenty percent to eighty percent. Then the number of MLL students who are exited from HomeLink will decrease by fifty percent, so from twelve to six students. And I want to point out that being exited from HomeLink doesn't mean you leave our programs altogether. A lot of those students, either they're brought in to our daytime program or evening program for more intensive in-person supports. A lot of them do end up working a lot with Miss York. So one of the things we have changed is, we have two different sides of Edmentum. We have a Courseware side and an Adoptions Academy side. And that Academy side last year was used only for HomeLink, and Courseware was used only for in-person. However, it was, made it really hard to yell at when we didn't have control on the Adoptions Academy side and really work with our students and that curriculum to meet the needs of our students. So we made a shift and all of our students are on the Adoptions side, and that means our HomeLink teachers are grading a little bit more, and that's okay. And then the students that want to take a foreign language class or a CTE course, they take those classes on the Adoptions side where they are connected to a Washington State-certified teacher who has expertise in that content area. And our biggest action plan, and we're really excited about it, is our grades nine and ten and some eleventh grade students, depending on their credit need, are participating in our MBLC cohort classes. So that's our mastery-based learning cohort classes. So we are about to wrap up session two of those classes. So the kids in our Intro to AFNR class will earn one point zero credits of CTE and in a point five of biology. And the students who are taking neuroscience will earn point five of psychology, point five of anatomy and physiology, and point five of that BioA. And then next year, they'll flip. So in six weeks, we have some students earning a credit and a half as opposed to one.
Thanks, Lexi.
Yes.
All right, so hopefully, here is where we see the through line. So there was a lot of numbers being thrown out there with our goals, and they didn't just.
just come out of nowhere. We did have, we do have some district goals as well when it comes to our district assessments and our SBA assessments. So right here, you can see, I don't want to read everything on there, but we have the same, we have that goal of 15% increase in achievement on the spring pass bridge A rating assessment for all of our students and all of our subgroups. That 15%, once again, didn't come from nowhere. That gets us really close to in line with where the rest of the state is when it comes to reading in the level threes and fours area. So that's what we, that's what we have for A rating assessment for K8 students. And then in math, that, what we also see is that even though our numbers are similar, we put a 10% goal of an increase because if you look at a lot of the state data as well, math proficiency, or I don't want to use that language anymore, math threes and fours goes way down as the students are continuing to go up in grade. We want to get ourselves more in line with where the state is. So we thought that that 10% increase in year one, looking at the data this way, would get us a lot closer and get us in line with where the state is. You can kind of see where we're at on those, the diagnostic assessments as well. So we have the same goal across all of our subgroups as well. And then SBA, it's the exact same look. We want to start seeing that, we want to see those level threes and fours increase on both the smarter balance for math and the smarter balance for E L A. And like a lot of our principals just said, the kind of the beauty in the work is right here in our action planning. We sat here in a meeting in June at the very end of last school year and looked and had all of our data all spread out and really looked at it. And our principals were like, we know our data, what are we going to do about it? And we really wanted to sit together and say, okay, we need to go with some real strong action steps. And our focus, from what we gathered from about four years' worth of data, as we're looking through all these training, it looks the exact same across four or five years, is that we need our core instruction and our core learning to be at the best it can be. And that's where you saw a lot of BLAD, UDL, Avid. That's our core tier one, everybody in the classroom instruction. And you heard a couple of our people over here talking about the learning walks. We have a district walkthrough tool, and in the next three weeks, we're going to be in every single building using those, that learning walk tool, not to evaluate teachers, but to really just kind of see where we're at on our tier one instructional commitments, our core instruction commitments. And other pieces we looked at, especially at the elementary, our master schedule. Are we allowing enough time in core instruction when everybody gets for math and E L A for that, for those high-impact, high instructional strategies to really be utilized? So we did a lot of work at the K5 of making sure that we have 60, 70 minutes of math, 70 minutes of E L A across the grade levels, mostly uninterrupted time where our teachers can actually use a lot of those strategies to support students. So as you can see here, we have curriculum PD at all of those, especially math. We went through our math adoption K8. We're trying, it was a little bumpy at the beginning, but I think we're now getting everything what everybody needs for all of our K8 teachers. We also at the 912, they haven't had curriculum PD in years on an adopted curriculum that they have, so they have little bits of virtual PD that have been going on during some P L C times and district, district time. You heard Jessica talk a little bit about P L Cs and support with buildings and that. Utilizing our O S S I grants appropriately to support that work. Those, that O S S I is Office of Systems and School Improvement, and we currently have three schools that are identified in tier three in the school improvement category, which does mean we receive a small amount of money, but we have to gear it towards a lot of those things that are going to improve schools, so professional development, coaching, not really adding to, or you could add salaries, but you can't distribute it to people that we already currently have. So a lot of those monies are going to be spent on some support for our building administrators and then some of our build members as well when it comes to professional learning communities. The district capacity assessment for N T S S, that's multi-tier systems of support, and I put in there academic and behavior systems. So we have E S D that's going to meet with all of our building admin teams, and we're going to go through a 26-question assessment to just really analyze as a district how we are supporting all of our buildings in N T S S, in academic and behavior systems. And it's a really fascinating assessment. I've been able to participate in other districts. It gives us really clear action steps that we, as a district and as our building teams, can really go and start doing. We heard a lot about our MLL and our populations and our goals around them. All of our, actually, I think there was one that didn't attend, but almost all of our MLL teachers attended the National WEDA conference, either in-person or virtually. And we actually have kind of an action planning meeting on Wednesday with the group to kind of go over the new learning that they had two weeks ago in that training and how we're going to help support not just them, but also general education teachers supporting MLL students. And they were talking a lot about the building walkthroughs. We have a great tool that was built from the commitments that our building teams had around those high-impact instructional strategies. It's, we're going to have a lot of good information. We have three of them that we want to schedule this school year. Last year, we did one at every building. We refocused after those meetings in June and then August around those commitments. I think we have a really good tool that's going to help support our building leaders, help support the building leaders, the building teacher leaders in the building as well with what our look-for's are. So that is it. I know I said if we had specific building questions, if you want to ask me any questions, I think this is a good time to do that. Yes?
Okay. I think, first of all, I want to say this, thank you for how this information was presented to us. I think we've sort of shared this before, the cohesiveness, seeing everybody's goals and the data laid out in a similar fashion is super helpful for us to cross compare, and you guys are all doing really a lot of work, and we recognize that and we see that. One of my questions, going back to the elementary schools, I'm wondering, as we head into a new legislative session with TK, you know, kind of consistently being looked at, are we pulling aside, do we have that data with the two schools where we can pull aside and see this exact data, but only for the TK kids? And what does that look like?
It looks slightly, we did pull it, I didn't put it on here, but I had Savannah Elliott at our district assessment coordinator, she tagged all of our current and former TK students. So we have actually three years of data.
The third year now.
Yeah, so those three, those three groups we can pull. And it is above what our current, you know, general pop is scoring.
Yeah.
I don't have the exact numbers, I can get that pulled pretty easily.
I would love to see it, I'm sure.
And we actually used it in a letter to Chris Wright's office because there has been a.
Exactly.
A threat to take away our TK funding before the end of the school year. And so I organized a group of superintendents to write a letter expressing our displeasure with O S P I and their lack of planning in being able to support the funding that they said that we would have in districts. And we used our data as an example of the positive outcomes.
Yeah, I think they had an email to you that had all that information on it.
That's really cool. I would love to see that. Yeah. I had a question about just what Hattie means with Avid slash Hattie. Is Hattie a new?
So Hattie's an individual. And he did a meta-analysis, so thousands of studies on instructional strategies, or well, actually, anything that impacts student learning. And it started around 2008, 2009, I think was when the first book came out, and it shows different effect sizes. So ones that have very high impact on student learning, and we want to pull out the strategies that are going to increase achievement. So it's all about different learning strategies and different instructional approaches that have a high impact on student learning. So when we look at like Hattie, there's this threshold called 0.4. Anything above a 0.4 is more than one year's growth. And so we want to pick out the strategies that are going to impact student learning to create, so like from our district piece on the walkthroughs, one of them is classroom discussion has, if it's done really well and really modeled and really supported by the classroom teacher and the students in the class has almost a two-year growth that it sees in students on the learning that's happening in the classroom. So one of our walkthrough things that we're looking for, are students actually turning and talking on topic with each other? They have a good classroom discussion on the learning target that is going to be for the lesson. So Hattie is an individual that has about 20 years' worth of studies now.
This is combined Avid and Hattie strategy?
Yeah, that's, that's together.
I'm curious, this is more philosophical if, you know, kind of looking at these graduation rates and different things, are, do you, do you building leaders, do you feel we're still climbing up from the, our students are still climbing up from this COVID hole of having the disruptive learning? Is that part of it or no?
I don't know. Maybe I'll turn, but you've kind of been at the 80% for a little while, right? I think it was even before, pre-COVID, we've kind of been in that spot. I think now we're just really focusing on, I think, some of the stuff that our building leaders are working with or trying to see, okay, what are the ways that we can kind of move it, you know, we know we're not going to, it's almost impossible to have 100% of our kids graduate on time. There's a lot of barriers, right? So what are some of those ones that we might be missing, four or five kids can make that kind of difference to move it up in that percent? So, yeah, we've kind of been in the state as well. State's like, kind of stuck at like this 83%.
And then my last thing that popped in my head during the high school presentation was, you know, what is it about high school math where that number drops so precipitously? Like why, you know?
That's what we're trying to analyze. I mean, as a, you know, we compare ourselves with the state a lot, the state 10th grade math is lower than any other as well.
Right.
When we compare, ours did drop off a little bit more than the rest of the state. So I think having those moves with, starting with, with our freshmen and the success that we want to have in there as well. I know that, you know, ours, if you kind of look at where our kids are, have also started on the very first assessment, would that be in a 12, 15% kind of gap right from the very first assessment? I mean, we're just kind of, you know, we're, we've got to turn it up, I guess, after that very first assessment. And usually, when you go look at like the state, it's a kind of stair stepping down. In math, it's the opposite of E L A. So I don't have the right answer on that one, but I know that we have, you know, I've been meeting with the math teachers, we have really strong math teachers.
Yeah.
And I know they're working really hard to try to get that. I think, you know, Chad kind of talked about the assessment schedule as well. It's kind of in process right now of just changing what that looks like in comparison to years past, and even that might have a little uptick.
And I was kind of catching a little bit of this when you were talking about the action planning, but I assume the principals are looking at the different, you know, different teachers, different classrooms, and you're able to see, oh, what's successful that someone's working on and sharing, they're sharing that knowledge with other teachers who may not be as successful in a certain area?
Yeah, that's kind of the beauty of like the P L C, when those departments and those grade level teams are really meeting together, because that's where they have that opportunity. They're looking at their data, they're really analyzing, oh, this is where I'm struggling, you can get support from your colleagues that you're working with. So that's, that's where that really comes in.
Thank you.
I just want to thank Lexi again for graduation rates at James Taylor. I think every, you said 65%, but I think every year, just one student graduating in that four-year cohort, it's amazing. So many of those students come to you credit deficient and with very unique obstacles. So that's a great, great victory for you all. I was wondering, and I'm not suggesting this for future reports, it's just a wondering, there was a lot of focus on our multilingual learners and our multilanguage learners and our students with special needs, but thinking about some of those other groups that O S P I pulls out, like military dependents, students experiencing homelessness, kids in foster care, like, again, just a general wondering of how are some of our vulnerable students also performing?
Performing. And for this, I really was focused on those kind of, those subgroups, but I can really pull up, and sometimes our N size is too small on some of these. So it's, it's even a little bit more digging to try to find like the exact how much. I know with some of our high school, like I think Steven Chad or Sharon, we had to kind of like really dig deep to figure out that it was at that 50% for MLL because it was not showing up on like the actual report card itself. So I can definitely kind of take a look, but it's, I was not focused on it for this particular one.
Anyway, I'm really, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I was going to announce bonuses, but.
Never mind the bonuses.
Lexi's the winner.
Good evening, Board. I'm Dan King, Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations, and I am here tonight to present our budget status report. The budget status report is with our fiscal data through September 30th. And here it is, almost the end of October where we're having this board meeting. But whenever we do a budget status report, we want to capture an entire month's worth of financial data, which includes end-of-month payrolls and accounts payable. And so even though it's so very close to the end of October, this data only captures that first month of the fiscal year. So with that being said, let's start with the budget status of our other funds. So with the capital projects fund, our fund balance is 302,483. Debt service fund has a fund balance of 2,145,034. The ASB fund has a fund balance of 397,964. And the transportation vehicle fund ended September with a fund balance of 623,597. And remember, I mentioned at the last meeting, we have four buses on order, and that transportation vehicle fund is for the payment on those buses. It's going to leave us with a little under $20,000 left in that fund balance once we pay the invoices for those buses, which should be sometime around January, January, February. Let's look at our enrollment. Now, the enrollment actually does include our October enrollment because we do that at the beginning of each month. And so you can see here what we budgeted for. We budgeted for an enrollment of 2,357 FTE. Our October enrollment was 2,283.55 FTE. So that's 73.45 FTE less than what we had budgeted. Consequently, that does have an impact on our revenues. And it's one of those things where you have to be really careful because if we receive revenues that are based on a FTE above where our actual is, we owe that money back in January when they do adjustments to our portionment. So to be very careful not to have to owe back money for being overpaid in our portionment, we did an enrollment adjustment for our portionment on October 15th. So we brought it down to our actual. So we did that adjustment, and we'll see that in our next portionment at the end of October here. Now, you might wonder, what is the dollar amount? What does that amount to? That amounts to about $1.3 million in revenue difference. I want to share that with you because we're going to see that in our reports that we look at next month. You're going to see the, you're going to see some differences there.
And that we've adjusted the enrollment as well.
And that we've adjusted the enrollment as well. Yes. So you'll see that budgeted amount is going to reflect our more current numbers. So let's move on to our general fund. Again, through the month of September, our total revenue percentage to date was 7.06 and projected to be at 7.30. Local sources, 1.46, projected to be at 2.18. State sources at 8.48%, projected to be at 8.37. And we. And we did not capture any of those federal revenues yet, now we actually did capture some federal revenues in September, but those are grant accruals, we accrued those back in 2024. So, we're still working on the year-end fiscal process to create our F-196 and do our financial reporting. On last Friday was our deadline to submit a draft of that to the Olympic ESD 114 in Bremerton, we did that. We have until November 15th to submit that and certify it with OSPI. So we're still making some smaller adjustments, we're about 95% done with it, and the ESD, you know, is aware that, and it's a common thing, that still have some adjustments, they're gonna give us some input and feedback as well. So, our Budget Status Report also, we need to keep in mind that we're still making adjustments and have made adjustments since October 1st, and those aren't necessarily reflected here in this Budget Status Report. Once we complete the year-end, I will bring back to you a status on the fiscal year 2324 to see really where we ended up in terms of our fiscal year-end fund balance. So, we're close. So looking at here, you can see what our portionment was for September and different funding revenues that we received. And then going on to the next slide, looking at the big picture, our budgeted General Fund revenues are 44,668,7. Through September, we had received 3,106,265 for fiscal year 2425. We did receive some other funds in our portionment, as I mentioned just a moment ago, that was accrued back to 2324, because those were for grants and claims that we made for last fiscal year expenditures. Let's look at our expenditure report, so the projected year-end balance as a percentage of budgeted expenditures is showing here at 3.7. Now, again, I want to mention, we're still doing our fiscal year-end, and I think we're gonna have a clearer picture of what our fund balance is next month, with two months of, of revenues and expenditures to look at, and having completed moving things around as we do during the year-end. Our total expenditures actually here to date, 9.15%, 9.15, we projected 8.31. Salaries and benefits, we were at 7.9%, we projected that we would be at 7.83, and for basic ed actual, 10.03, we projected we'd be at 8.67. And then you can see there a listing of the top 10 expenditures through September. And then going on to the next slide, here we show our budgeted General Fund expenditures for the year at 44,524,338, and the current year-to-date through September was 4,71,809. Now, I also want to mention that our September accounts payable was really an anomaly, we had a higher than typical accounts payable at the end of September, it was actually maybe double what it typically is, and the reason is we did some curriculum purchases in September, and we did some curriculum purchases. So, those things did have an impact on our accounts payable, which was larger than average, I want to say. Now, we'll know what the average is once we have more months to go on, but just to give you an idea, it was 779,563 in our accounts payable, and generally it's under 500,000. So, and sometimes around, more like around 400,000. So it was a much larger than typical accounts payable. Now, this next slide here, I, I put this together, Director Crowe had asked for some more detail on our Special Education revenues and expenditures, so the top part of this table shows 2324, because it's, it's the whole year, and, you know, the numbers might change a little bit once we're done with year-end, but we're pretty, pretty, this pretty much reflects Special Education, because we pretty much finished all of our year-end processes for Special Ed. So you can see there, there's two different funding sources for Special Ed, basically, I mean, the, they can be broken down even further, but we have state and federal generally. The state, Special Education is typically Program 21, 2100, and federal 2400. There are some subprograms to those, but I lumped them together, so it's just the two, state and federal. So on our general apportionment for Special Education last year, you can see there 4,863,994, and what our revenues were, and they match. But you can also, so we receive what we're allocated, that's really what that means. We received every penny that was allocated to us. And the same thing goes with the federal. But the expenditures, you can see, with the state, we had spent more than what was allocated and what our revenues were, and that's not uncommon. And, and I think it's pretty widely known that Special Education is underfunded in Washington State, and that really is a focus of our request for our legislators to help us out in that regard to. Now, the federal though, you can see, we, we didn't overspend, and the reason is, those are grants, and those are, those are grants that we use those dollars, and then we put in a claim for the amount we spent and get reimbursed. So because it's a spend-reimbursed, and we only have up to that allocation, we can't spend any further, that's why it's to the penny, and we didn't leave any money on the table. All that Special Education grant money, we took advantage of and used to the fullest, and that is something that we do strategically with all of our grants, we try to spend everything that we're allowed to spend, so we don't leave money on the table. Or if, in some cases, a grant might allow, it might be a multi-year grant, allow some carryover, but if we can avoid leaving money on the table, we do so, we do it to the best of our ability. Sometimes grants have some, they're restrictive, you can only use them for certain things and nothing else. And also, some of those restrictions are timeline, you cannot spend past a certain date. And so because of those reasons, sometimes we leave some money on the table, but we really try to make that very minimal. So you can see here with Special Education, that is an opportunity for us to have all the funding that we can get, and so we did that last year, and we intend to keep doing that. You can see for 2425, our Special Education funding, you can see the allocation is higher in our general apportionment. Now that does not reflect our enrollment adjustment, so you'll see that number change. So what I'd like to do is, if, if this type of information is helpful to you, I'll take out last year to 2324 going forward, but each month, update the 2425 Special Ed funding so you can see this change over time throughout the year. You're gonna see that allocation change based on Special Education enrollment. But there you go, you can see that it was projected to be higher than last year, we already received in September 447,000 plus in revenues, what we spent, and actually, we didn't spend as much as we received, however, there's a lot more school year to go. And then with the grants, so the, the federal grants for IDA Part B, we have not yet submitted and gotten, and because there's, there's time, there's a deadline for that, I don't know off the top of my head, but our Special Ed Director is working on, maybe completely finished with the application for that, but we haven't received that yet. So last year, actually, it was December, when we found out when, how much we're getting in those grants?
Yeah.
And so, it could be December again. So, that gives you a little bit of an update, a little more detail on the Special Education. And then I want to end with the fund balance projection. Again, I want to make sure that, you know, I'm clear that we're still making some adjustments with, with our enrollment, with our year-end process for fiscal year 2324, there was a change in our funding, or we'll anticipate seeing that because of the change in enrollment. This projection also is based on the fact that we had a very, very abnormal, higher-than-usual accounts payable in September, and so these numbers aren't quite reliable, but I also do think they are cautionary, showing that our fund balance is showing here a decline. Now, is it exactly what's shown here? I, I have a feeling we're gonna see some changes next month and what this looks like. But our, one thing I can, I can tell you is accurate and to the, is a correct amount, is the September month-end balance. The September month-end balance of 1,739,488 was our fund balance at the end of September. That does not include any accruals that we, I haven't completed yet based on the year-end, so those, those grant accruals should help change that September 1. So, next month, when we look at September, we should see a higher number than what's showing right now. That's either gonna be, because I have my accrual numbers here, 126,000 higher, that's what we accrued in October, and in September, we accrued 129,900, so together, that's 256,018. So, what I cannot definitively tell you right now is if this number reflects the September 1 yet, because the journal entries and how they hit the books, I'm not sure of the timing of that yet, I wasn't able to verify. So, we should at least see that to be 126,000 higher, if not more. And that concludes the Budget Status Report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Your honor.
Did anybody have any questions? Okay, and then, we are to the assurance of organizational performance and policy monitoring reports. I have, I have, but I would entertain a motion to find the superintendent's performance to comply with ER 13.
Would be a motion to find the superintendent in compliance with ER 13.
Do we have any discussion? Okay, and then, all for this passing, or finding the superintendent's performance to comply with ER 13, signify by saying aye, with our student first, aye. Okay, and for the rest of us?
Aye.
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 Aye as well, and that is good to go. And do we have any discussion on the policy review of ER 6 facilities and ER 7 asset protection from the last meeting? Good deal. Now we are on to another exciting part of our, number eight, our superintendent search firm. We are asked to adopt a motion to choose one of the four consultant firms interviewed at the October 7, 2024 School Board meeting and authorize North Mason School District to enter into a consultant contract with them. So this is where we can discuss this, not in the details that we spoke in executive session, but we can talk about this.
So, do we want to make a motion to?
Yeah.
To adopt somebody, or do we want to go through this, the top ones we have, or how do you guys feel we should go through this?
I think it's, we'd be fine to make a motion and discuss.
Okay.
So.
So I'll make a motion to select a, one of the four firms we interviewed on October 7.
Okay.
So.
You're gonna name one?
I do want.
Do we want to name one, or do we want to go through and discuss our top and then go through, or?
Dude, I, I feel like our discussion, we have ended up having a consensus.
We did, we did, and I, like, in more of, does everybody feel the same during, during the executive session? Or has any, you know, come up during that time?
Can somebody please read off the four names?
Absolutely, I just pulled that up.
Ray and Associates, HYAA, McPherson, and Northwest.
Yeah, Northwest Leadership.
I thought Northwest was our?
That was Leadership, Northwest Leadership was the last one.
That's right.
We interviewed all four?
Yep.
And discussed all four? I'm okay with naming one, did you guys change?
Nick, do you have anything that's come up from that point, Nicole?
Uh, no, I think we have five applicants though.
We have five applicants, so we only have the four.
We only have the four.
Have you had any?
I don't have anything further than what we all discussed and there.
So, I'll make a motion to enter into a consultant contract with Ray and Associates to find our next superintendent.
Okay, and a discussion on that?
Uh, we heard from four, you know, we heard initially from five search firms, narrowed it down to the four that we interviewed, and I think many of them had strong presentations, and I appreciated the discussion we had in executive session, where I think we were more or less at a consensus from the beginning, but it was a good process to go through what were the strengths and weaknesses of the different firms, because I think even with some of the strengths that the other firms instituted, we can maybe bring that into the relationship with Ray and Associates. I don't really have anything else to add, I look forward to working with them, and I think that we should be explicit about, you know, which of their partners we're most interested in working with.
And would we, when we're talking about the, the person that we were most in, most intrigued with, that, that we like, who led it very well, do we talk about that here, or do we add that in?
That's, that's.
That, that's when we're talking, negotiating with them.
Okay.
I mean, you can say here who you like, but.
Oh, good, and I have.
But you're, but you're making it, if you select a firm, you're making a contract with the firm, and you can, you can make a preference, but they may have, may, may not be able to meet that.
Sure, sure. But I think it is within our.
Agreed.
Purview to make that request.
100.
Yeah.
100.
Yes.
My only comment, I think, would be the fact that out of the, the groups, it felt like many of them, I mean, you could almost, besides the folks that we interviewed and talked to, you could almost take their offerings and just take the name off, and they're very, very, very similar, they do the same things, they talk to the same boards, they look at the same job boards. And one thing that brought to my attention was just if there's things that we need for North Mason, we're gonna really have to, as a board, come together, and not only as a board, but also as a district, with the employees to say, hey, these are the things we're looking for, these are the things that really stand out, let's make sure we push for those things, because almost all of them, it sound like, well, we'll do whatever you want us to do.
Right, right.
We'll make you happy, so we need to find out what happy looks like for us.
Nicole? Nicole?
Um, yeah, I think it was important to us to look outside of just this area, cast that net wide, and we feel, I believe, confident that Ray and Associates will do that, as you said, not just the same pawns to dip in, but other places, and and yet I think one common thing that we all said was the fact that they really did personalize, not just like the name, North Mason School District, but they went and found specific things about our district, integrated that, and that, maybe that should be the norm, but it was a nice extra to see them, the extra stuff that they did.
I, I really want to thank all the folks that applied, and all the presentations that we received, and the interviews that we had with everybody that was there, I thought it was great to have people that came in the room, people on Zoom, and just a lot of their thoughts on that they put in their proposals and in the room, and they discussed with us. And I agree with everybody that a lot of it, there's a lot of similarities between a lot of them. I'm excited to get this going and definitely have a national broad search on that are, not only that the board, our folks in our buildings and our community have a lot of input. And that was one of the things that I think all of us saw highlighted in quite a few of these, was that engagement for everybody to, you know, voice what they want to see in the superintendent, so we're excited to get it moving.
I agree, I agree, that, like Nick was saying, that everybody kind of essentially did on top some of the same things, but I really like how they stood out, and I got comfortable when they spoke, when they were very professional and they were very organized. And I'm gonna say it out loud, I really appreciate we read, and how she presented, and how she followed up the presentations from each person. I hope that, and like, that she would definitely be part of that leadership there, so. I, I don't know, we don't second this one, we just all vote and then discuss further than that. So we do this, we don't do the student on this one. The student.
I'm sorry.
Student four is all good, presented. Okay, so all four choosing Ray and Associates to enter into a contract with them to find our superintendent, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye as well, and didn't see any difference, so. That passes, and we are choosing Ray and Associates, and that's exciting. Step one, right, I mean, it's not step one, but it's the, the first, uh, next step, yeah, it's our milestone here, so.
Are you reaching out to them?
Yeah, so Jackie will reach out to them, have a conversation with them. There is a possibility, depending on what that is, I am going to be in Scottsdale, on where their lead associate that was leading that conversation is. So I may see if I can just meet with him and just say hello, since I'm gonna be down there for my daughter's softball tournament, just to, if the board's okay with that, on, kind of to project, hey, look, we're here, I happen to be down here on personal business, but here we are, thank you, Ray.
That won't be our first, not our first reach out, right?
No, Jackie's gonna reach out for me.
We will need that.
So you're just, you're going to say, hey, here I am, and I'm.
I just happen to be going.
You want to definitely go and say aye.
I'm leaving Wednesday, I'm gonna be down there until.
Okay, I'll be there in December, so if we need a follow-up with another.
Everybody's gonna be checking in on this. I will not be in Scottsdale ever.
You may not become an asset person, but we will.
Well, that's kind of the thing too, is I figured, well.
So show up when everybody shows up, knock on their window, and not only, or be like, yeah, take pictures. Okay. Jokes, that's fine. Okay, so I think we are good there, and we are on to the adjournment phase. And the announcement and comments from the public, anybody? Nothing sent to us or anything like that. And before I move down to the good of the order to start that off, I noticed we haven't had a legislative thing, so if Arlo wanted to start the good of the order side, and if you had anything from legislative, and then if you wanted to add anything on there.
I don't really have anything to add, general, what do they call it, general conference was last month, and I think everybody's just gearing up for the next legislative session. There's been some voting floating around the different, most committees, like the larger statewide committees, that I participated in some of that voting on our behalf, and reading through candidate profiles and that type of thing. But other than that, I have nothing else to report on that front, are we just sliding into good of order? I attended the Bell Elementary Fall Festival, which was very fun, and that's such a cool, you know, just feel-good community event, it was so busy, so packed. And it just, it, yeah, it felt really good.
Right on team.
No, um, yeah, also, I'm gonna take a little different spin. You know, normally we highlight these great things, and there are some great things that are happening. But I had a kind of juxtaposition, recently I went to a ballgame, this was a college, so they can do things a little differently, but they actually gave out an ice cream to the visiting folks. Mind you, they didn't have many visitors, so it was not a big investment. But I remember thinking, I'm like, wait a minute, this is a competitive environment, they're doing something nice for the visitors. And then I had an experience where I went to a game where we were the visitors somewhere else, and we were welcomed, not with free stuff or anything, but this was a JV, so a smaller setting. It's not the loud setting where you've got the band and everything. And it was the first time ever where I've actually sat there and been like, oh my gosh, I can't believe our fans are saying these things to the refs and to the players. And some of it might have been the weather, it was cold, it was rainy, it was miserable, the game was going miserably. But it was one of those first times where I was like, okay, there's places where we can still rise above. I feel like our home field, we've done some great things, but it just opened my eyes up to places where maybe we can continue to work, continue to spread messaging, and who knows, maybe we could give a free popcorn someday, or something like that. But I was just like, what can we do to maybe help people remember this is a sport, and these are kids playing, and we're building individuals, not future professional athletes necessarily. So I, I mean, I saw wonderful things, and I've seen some great things here, but that was one time where I was like, okay, we've still got some growing to do, so.
That's a good takeaway, that's a, I mean, not a good thing that that happened, but I appreciate that you brought that up, because that's real awesome.
Yeah, I'm done, sorry, sorry. I didn't have a gavel there, I'm sorry.
I guess you can.
I'll get you. I, I appreciate that. We had some, so speaking of athletics, I believe we had some athletes at the Hawkins Middle School Track and Field Westbound League Championships that were personal records and also placed, so that was really, really exciting, because a lot of times we focus on high school athletics, and so that was, that was pretty cool for Hawkins. I was not able to attend the Beyond the Bulldog Night, I had to work that night, but I heard really great things, and I wanted to commend our high school team, because it wasn't just conferences this time, for those that don't have high school students. They also had a thing going on that talked about career in college, they had some, they had an NCAA rep come and talk about that, and eligibility and what that process looks like. They had a workshop on financial aid, and then even what are the graduation requirements and pathways. And I think that was super, super helpful to our students and our families, and it was great that all of that happened right there when a lot of them are showing up anyway, so it wasn't like an additional, oh gosh, I have to fit this into my schedule, so that was, that was really great to see, and I hope we continue that tradition. And I wanted to thank my fellow board members for our conversation in the executive session. I appreciate that we listened to each other, and we gave each other space to talk, and I can't say anything else about what happened, but I appreciate you all, so it's great to work with a good team, so thank you.
I have a question enough to sit in on a bowling coach interview, because Rob graduated to athletic director, and I congratulate Angelo Ivy, and then I don't know his name, Greg something, he's the JV baseball coach for the high school. And I'm excited to see where that season goes, because it's my senior year. And then the band played at the Kelso competition last weekend. We got sixth overall, and then second in our division. So we're improving, and then this Thursday is senior night. Unfortunately, it's on Halloween, but I'm still excited, I get to wear my costume one of you.
Nice, what's your costume?
I'm a minion. Me and my best friends are gonna be Bob, Stuart, and Kevin, so.
We want a picture.
I'm sure Amanda will get one.
Um, all of that. I really appreciated, I just finished the second year of coaching now at the middle school softball. Really appreciated coaching all those girls, and we've got another widely athletic great kids from sixth all the way to our next year as freshmen coming up, that's gonna be pretty cool. So really proud of all those kids, so.
This last month, I had to miss the levy meeting, I got sick, and then I had to go have dental oral surgery. So, but I'm glad, Nick, that you brought up the, brought that up, because I wanted to say, it's not us, because I never see our post out there like that, but I notice when on the internet, like on Facebook, and I see comments of, whether it's political or whatever it is, doesn't really matter the topic, but we're people that are directly involved with children, whether they're teenager or very young, their voice goes out, and they're making comments that could be damaging to a kid's learning of how to react. And then in the same people posting, these are friends, I'm not pointing fingers at certain people, but they also put out, why, why is this divisive, or why are these things damaging? And I had to go back and look at myself, so when you said something like that, it kind of, I was gonna, I'm gonna think about saying it here, but this is the place, and then somebody, when I commented, somebody goes, I appreciate that you care about the children, but this matters, you know, or whatever, and I'm like, we're teaching the children, we're raising adults, so I appreciated all the, I thought comment there, we're raising adults. Not to prop that up for me, but most of my month was getting ready for surgery, and then the last four days of getting through it, so. That's it for me, do you have anything else?
Yeah, so, um, I'm gonna touch base with Nick later, but you know, beyond the Bulldog Night, I want to say, I'm so proud of our team, because that morning, we had a short electrical fire at the high school that caused the team to have to change where that happened, and, and kind of pivot, and they did such an outstanding job, and still had a great evening opportunity, and I got to walk up and see all the presenters, and it was really powerful, and it was also so cool that they didn't let something like that stop it from being great for kids and families. So I think that was really, really neat. And I also wanted to say, I, our Rotary partnered with our Theater Pit program this year to provide a haunted experience over the past two weekends, and I heard it got off to a little bit of a slow start, because the final inspection didn't happen as scheduled, and they had to wait till the inspector got done before they could open the doors on the first night, but, but people did have a good experience, and our kids had fun getting to be the actors in the space, and so that was a really good partnership, and one of the things that makes this such a cool community, so.
Ian, um, anybody have anything else? Can I get my purple? Okay, and yep, we're on to the self-assessment, and that is the director, Director Eric.
So for general meeting behavior on our board, I list this all as satisfactory on all of those categories. We followed our government principles, I marked as yes, and all of those principles underneath on there, I marked as a good, and overall, I marked as satisfactory for the speed.
I love the way you did that.
I can't push that last. I gotta work on that.
All right, and we've all had our chance to speak there, so on to the next board meeting. Date is held on November twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four, at six-thirty, right here in the boardroom, and when is our?
The weekend before.
The weekend before, what is the date that it starts, maybe?
The twentieth, is that when Wasita starts, the twentieth, is that when they fly over?
We're on the twentieth.
Okay.
Or drive.
Driving, we, I think, yeah.
We need to look at the December meeting, because I think we're at the falls.
The December meeting is currently scheduled on December twenty-third. If the board would like to make a change, I think before you adjourn, would be a good idea for someone to make a motion.
Do we want to do that now, or at the next meeting?
Well, I can do it at either point, but if everybody right now knows they don't want to meet on December twenty-third.
I do not want to meet on December twenty-third.
Well, that's why Nicole was nice enough to bring it up.
You could, you could make, someone could make a motion that it be on December sixteenth, would that be the previous Monday?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cannot.
Hold on, I have to figure that out.
Or December thirtieth?
Don't think so.
December, I'm sorry. Um, you said sixteenth, wasn't that?
Sixteen. Is everybody available on the sixteenth?
I'm not.
You're not?
Do, you could also, because you're changing it, choose a different night of the week, but you have to be careful, because some of you are not available.
Are we all?
It's not available on the twenty-third?
I'm available on the twenty-third, and they tend, the December one tends to be a very short meeting, I mean, historically has been
I'm not trying to put pressure or anything, but we don't all have to be there, you know?
You, you have to have a core, and you have to be able to have three people be there.
Right. Could we put this off until November, where we would know a little?
Everybody think about it.
Yeah.
Better, are we thinking about it?
I mean, technically you could cancel it too, but
That's true.
But I don't think.
Just in case there's signatures or whatever, it's imperative.
It's all.
No, there's, there's, but you have to do it sometimes, so.
As a breakdown.
Yeah.
As a breakdown, we all, I can change most of the stuff that we have in the boardroom. Okay.
Okay.
I'll leave it be.
Okay, okay. So again, still the November twenty-fifth and we'll talk about that then, six-thirty PM right here in the boardroom. And we are closing our doors here at eight-thirty.
Seven.
Eight.